Turner County Board of Education. Here's your agenda. Where you see these proposed things, that will be brought up more at the meeting next week. Like Mike Moore, he will speak next week. This is just to let them discuss what's coming up. Alright. We've got a page two this week. Usual items you see on there. Uh, number three there, the service dog. Not sure what that's about. But the millage rate, you see there, slight rollback. The millage rate now has to go to the county commission. The county commission must approve the school board millage. And when they approve it, then it will become official. The county commission is set to vote on that tomorrow night, Tuesday. There's your other meeting matters. And that wraps up the agenda for this meeting. From your left to right, looking at screen, Superintendent Christie Ray, Chairman David Mathis, Vice Chair Sandra Blue, Cornelius Ball, C. Ball is not yet here, Ann Kendrick, and the longest-serving member of the school board, Sam Brown. He is one of the longest-serving public elected officials in Turner County today. The board meeting will be starting in a moment.
I go to that panel. It's in there that they roll out. You know, sometimes when...
Well, it don't make for you for somebody to play with.
I don't know why.
Play the places and everything.
I don't know why it's stuck up there.
You know, that side of the thing, coming out from your mom's house, yard.
I do.
Two days.
Yeah.
Run that, I'm in, I'm a front yard. Where the old house was across the road from that?
I've seen some of those.
Thoughts?
Do you like it?
We'll thank you today and thank you for listening to us with the good leave for our families last week. And to make it push towards the Christmas holidays and just ask to bless our teachers, our faculty, our staff, and our students. And just taking the knowledge they need for the next couple of weeks. So, if you're ready for an afternoon break, ask everything to do during this meeting. Be closing here, I pray for you.
So, you have the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a vote for which it stands. One nation, united. We are the symbol of liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a public agenda for recent edition, 1025, or any of them? Call order, discussion pledge, the agenda is in front of us. We have some student staff recognition next week.
We do, we have our star student. We also have our star faculty.
We do have one request for public participation. Mike Moore, who's chairman of the Titan College Career Academy Governor's Board.
Right.
Would be here to speak to us. Um, I don't have, I don't require your action very much, Superintendent. We have the approval of minutes. We have the financial statements over next week. I think Ms. Walker has something to share with us.
So, being a packet, you should have something that says what equalization funding is. This is just something we put together. To go back, because several, maybe a month or two ago, we talked about equalization funding and how that's affected if you use function 4000, which is usually for facility acquisition and renovations. And how function 4000 affects our equalization funding. And I'm not sure the exact words I used, but I did say that it will negatively impact our equalization funding. So, I wanted to put a packet together that explains, basically, the top here right just tells you the equalization basically came about to level out the playing field between the schools that did not have as much in revenues versus the schools that do. It's about the wealth of the schools. Whenever you typically, your Fund 100 is your general fund and 4000 is generally associated with the facilities acquisition and construction. If you go through, I'm not going to read all of this to you because I know you can read it, but if you go down right above number three, in short, the coding function 4000 to Fund 100, it makes the district look wealthier or more capable than it really is, which lowers our equalization grant. So, when we use function 4000 with Fund 100, it does negatively impact our equalization funding. So, I laid out the formula and at the top of the second page, I've given you a step-by-step of the formula. And this is according to the official code of Georgia annotated law. And I've explained what the formula is and underneath that, I've explained the key definitions that you'll need when looking at that formula. So, under the key definitions, if you go to the last bullet, you see local tax revenues. They take those revenues, but they reduce any general fund expenditures for capital outlay, which is function 4000. I think this question came about when we were talking about whether to fund the furniture, thank you, Mr. Ray, with using part of that 3.5 million for funding the general fund. So, we chose to use the part of the 3.5 million because that's part of our capital outlay we need. So, anyway, because they do, will subtract that from your local revenues. So, underneath the key definitions, I gave you an example. And for the example, I actually gave you two examples. We take the assumption that the guaranteed valuation is 150,000 per weighted FTE and the district valuation is 100,000 per weighted FTE. And the weighted FTE is 5,000. If the local tax revenues were 10 million, which ours are nowhere near that, but I was just trying to round it for ease, and the assessed valuation was 500, 500 million, the capital, and then capital outlay function is 2 million. Those are what we assume. So, you take your steps up above and you, I figured step one, because step one and step two will be the same for both of the examples. So, you see that the 150,000 is your statewide average. You take the school's assessed valuation per weighted FTE of 100,000 and you subtract that to get your 50,000. Then you take that 50,000 and of course, one mil is equal to, is 1,000. So, you divide that by 1,000 to get 50. Now, if you go to the last page, you'll see scenario one. Scenario one is the capital outlay excluded. In other words, if we do not charge anything for capital outlay to fund 100 and we use this scenario, you can see where we worked out, the local tax revenue of 10 million, you divide it by the 40% assessed value of 500 million and it comes out to .2. And then you multiply that by 1,000 and you get 20. Then you have to get the mils to equalize. So, I took that 20 and I subtracted five because you've got to take off your local fair amount there. And then I also put in red the 15 because, 15, because the state law says that the state will not equalize anything over 15 mils. And they put that cap on there. So, if you have a system that put a high millage rate, that they want paying an enormous amount out to equalize systems that were already bringing in a bunch of money. So, in the state law, they cap it at 15. So, I just put the 15 in red so you would know that. But when you get the mils to equalize, 20 minus five is the 15. And then you look at your equalization amount. You go back and you take that 50 that you get from the valuation per mil and you multiply it by 15 to come up with 30 and 750,000. Then I took that same exact scenario, using all the same numbers. The only difference that I did was I said, okay, what if we use $2 million to put a roof on a building? That's capital outlay. And if we charged it to fund 100? So, when, what they do is they take your local tax revenue and for function 4000, they subtract anything you've charged to Fund 100, function 4000. We can use swap funds with 4000 because that doesn't play into equalization at all. So, by taking the 2 million away, that put me down to 10 million divided by the 2 million is 8 million. Now, you divide that by the 500 million and you actually come out to .016. And when you multiply that by the 1,000, you get 16. So, you take the 16, subtract your five local mils, and you come out to 11. And once again, I just put the red 15 to show you that, because the state would cap it. If, if, if I had, say the local was 15 million, I'd come out with 30. And if you take 30 minus five, you get 25, but the state would have capped it at 15, if that makes sense. They take the 15 or whatever your mils to equalize is. So, when it drops it to 11, now you take that same 50, you multiply it by the 11, and you notice that our equalization would drop down to 2,750,000, which means we would lose a million dollars in equalization. It's not, it's not an easy concept and it takes a lot of figuring, but I will assure you that every time I go to my required annual training, Amy Rao, who is over financial review at the Department of Ed, she drills that home for us to not use function 4000 with Fund 100 unless it's absolutely necessary. If we have to put a roof on a building and we had no funds anywhere else, you may not have a choice. But, but we can be assured that that new roof would cost us more than 2 million or 1 million because it will also cost us an equalization funding. Because they do intend, the Department of Ed intends for your general operating funds to be used on students. And even though a roof is for students, it's considered capital outlay. So, the conclusion I wrote down there, coding function 4000 and Fund 100 reduces the effective millage rate and lowering the number of, number of mils to equalize and cutting the equalization grant. And in this example, it cuts it by 1 million dollars. Any questions? I, 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 it's hard to go through it and just expect people to understand, but I do, I do encourage you to take that home and study it. And if you have any questions, please drill it through the call line. But I did want to clarify that because sometimes when I get up here, I know, you may not think it, but I get very nervous and I may have misspoken. I don't know. I don't, but I, but I do know that we've always been told to try to avoid Fund 100 and function 4000 together.
So, we also have the approval of the new middle high district summary and the splice budget and the hand contract completion. We have all the orders for the next month.
I thought we decided we were on a good page. If y'all are going to start next full year, starting January, so I wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Start next month.
We have the approval of the high school FCC LA around two trip request to Atlanta in February 26th and 27th. The government saves for FCC LA, put Atlanta homes, program of work and college visits.
So, you have that, the trip request itself, TR 7755, and the details contained, which includes 38 students and five staff members will be attending. I've also included the flyers where you can see the FCC LA information contained within their field for specific programs. But we are asking next Monday to approve this schedule. And it would be overnight, Monday, Friday night.
Oh, I don't know. Hey, introduce, I mean, FCC LA?
I think it said there was no charge for the kids, but let me check that. Requested payment amount is $0. So, it's not coming from anything that has to be paid outside.
So, I have the best proof, not someone.
I'll find out.
Out of Judy's information, I was for board, beginning with the construction of the thing.
So, I don't know if you've had a chance to ride through, the building where the construction is going on, but over Thanksgiving holidays, there was a lot of exciting things that happened. They started pouring slabs and they were supposed to start bean work, burkeville bean work. So, that's ongoing. So, it's exciting to see things coming out of the ground already. This will move much faster, phase two than phase one did, simply because it's one story versus the two story. Another thing that's exciting is that instead of the October 15th, our tenancy timeline for all to be completed, we're running two weeks ahead of schedule. So, it's looking like right now will be the end of September. Want another reading, Sue?
We got updated planning schedules for June varsity and varsity wrestling and varsity basketball. Today, purposes service dog and Turner County Elementary School.
So, we were the innovation at Turner County Elementary School. Betty has joined the team and so she has been instrumental in some of our de-escalation situations as well as some of the short practices that we've been in place. I do, Ms. Shaprock is here. If y'all might ask any additional questions. I know at the border tree, that gave some information about the service training plan. It's my understanding, if I was wrong, it's my understanding that she can start the official training at six months old. She's about four months old now. So, basically what they're doing is affirming her to being around students and being around a lot of people for the next couple of months. So, then when she starts the official training at six months old, that six months training will allow her to have the full certification. She at this point is affirming well, I think is the best way.
Shannon, Robert.
Actually, I didn't, I didn't know she was on the agenda. I thought about that, I would have. I was coming for rest and rest, yes ma'am. But like, I just want to give you examples. Like today, we had a new student who was crying in the hallway and didn't want to go to class. And so, when I went and introduced myself to her, invited her to my office, she spent time with Betty for about two minutes. The crying was completely gone. She was perfectly fine and just had no problem going straight to class. And it's just an example of something we're seeing almost weekly where she could just, she just helps by having a cute little puppy there, you know? I don't want to go into too much detail about her training mission, but I can.
Where would the training be?
So, there's a couple of different options. So, she has to, at six months, she has to go through basic obedience training, one and two. And then those will, those could be, those will be in Albany. And then to get, she's got to get a good citizenship certification, which is just the next level through, it's through AKC, so it'll be out of Atlanta. And then to become a de-escalation school therapy dog, she can't start that until her first birthday. And then she'll, she'll go through that training in Atlanta as well. So, obedience training in Albany and then good citizenship and certification for her actual be a certified therapy dog is in that. With her certification, through that organization comes liability insurance and I've got to be certified as her handler, so I've got to go through training as well. It's about a $2,000 process, but I just think it's something to be really good for the school. So, we're looking to follow through with that.
Would you use it at least though?
Well, probably, she'd have to be with me. So, where I was, she could be.
Yeah, with you.
Yes, ma'am. So, because if I become her certified handler, like I couldn't, I don't think, I couldn't just like send the dog away. I'd have to be with her legally, I think, in the event that she was particularly being used at the moment for de-escalation. Because part of the, part of the certification for de-escalation means like a hysterical student can pick her up and hold her and she's just going to just sit there and just be okay with that, right? So, that's the big difference between like a service handler, you know, like where they just walk around with me and they can go and play. She, she has to have the temperament and that's the point of having her in the school now, is being around the kids right now. Because, man, she doesn't care at all who touches her plays with her. She's an Australian shepherd, Great Pyrenees mix. Right now, she's 20 pounds, but she looks like she's 35 because she's fluffy. She's cute. I wish I, I wish I had her on. I'll bring her, maybe later visiting you at some point. Or you could come, feel free to come visit her at the school.
More questions for Ms. Parker? The Lord of the Four, sponsorship of the district last Bell and B.
Ms. Lyndega surprised me after we had the last Bell and B, Elementary and Middle School a week together and asked if the school system would be interested in having a district trophy, almost like something that's presented at a masters where it's got the student's name on the front that they won it this year. It can be a competition between the elementary school and the middle school, who gets the trophy for the year until the next competition comes around. A big deal, that's what she was hoping for it to be. So, I asked her if she could go ahead and get us some mockups of the trophy and then present next Monday as about as her performance, some of those mockups, maybe the actual trophy itself, depending on what the trophy shop was able to do in that time period. This is something she's willing to donate when I'm going to purchase. So, I want y'all to be aware that Four H is willing to cooperate and support.
Thank you. That will do it for the regular meeting. We will move on to the items from the distance and presentation.
So, the week before Thanksgiving, we did have a call for meeting for the millage rate. We did do the official rollback rate, which was 13.862 from the previous rate of 14.25. The board did approve that. I appreciate that. And I just wanted that to make sure that everyone was aware who wasn't able to attend that call for meeting. I had my interview today for the Transan Merals Career Connected Collaborative Grant that we have applied for. This is a nationwide grant and it's a 15-month program. During that 15 months, basically what it's going to do is make our college and career academy and our CTA programs more robust, help us connect more with our workforce, help us connect more with our community, build those workplace learning programs and new friendships programs up. So, we are looking forward to that. Like I said, my interview went well today. That was the superintendent's part of the application process. This Friday, we'll have the community interview. And those community members will be pulled from our governing board, industry leaders, business owners, students and parents will make up that interview. So, we look forward to having that interview and then hearing that in the next two weeks if we're moving on to the next phase. And again, that's no call status, just a benefit. We do have the GSBA pre-conference workshop scheduled for this spring on Wednesday. And that will be for Mr. Mathis, Ms. Blue, and Ms. Kendrick. And then Mr. Brown and Ms. Ball will be attending the conference in person. And we'll get all that information as far as times and set up the specifics to be taken. As a reminder, our board did receive the board distinction award that was announced back in October. I will actually receive the award with Mr. Brown and Ms. Ball at the GSBA conference on Friday. We have the cognia onsite disreview. It was originally scheduled for December, but that date has been changed to January that week. And I've got Mr. Gordon here to talk about next steps and all that process.
I think I spoke earlier about the school looking at our system of radiation. Currently, the high school is the only one that's good by Congress. And we're working to get all our students certified. There's a lot of information. We're right now, we're in phase one for the project, getting things done. It is a lot of work. Our rep, he actually said, we're going to become best friends. I can already tell you, yes we are. We met today, we decided to move that site to late January, maybe early February to make sure that we're prepared and ready to go. You have any questions? You have any questions? I think in the past, our elementary, middle, I, I cannot remember.
GAC.
It's GAC.
Georgia Association.
So, now we're moving on to system wide.
The next couple of items are just dates, bring them out of your calendars. Um, my husband and I will be hosting a Christmas party for all the district staff, staff and the school admin on December the eleventh. We'll be doing that here in town at Southern Best Field since that was such a great place to have our board retreat, um, supporting local. The next superintendent student advisory captain meeting and community service project will be held on December the twelfth. Uh, the JROTC military ball is December thirteenth. Uh, we've also been asked by Brooks County, um, it seems like they have found out about our cloud twelve intercom system and the benefits and what we're able to do with that system that a lot of other intercom systems, um, camera systems don't provide. And so, they've asked to come and do a site visit. And so, we're scheduled that now for them to come and do that. And then, of course, I'm always trying to give you testing updates this time of year because we have so many different, um, assessments that are going on. Access two point O, beacon, our EOCs and our EOPAs are all going on right now as we speak. Um, as you can see, the holidays are also upon us. We know that December is a busy month. Um, our students will go out on December the nineteenth and they'll return on January the sixth. And then as far as an overview, um, I wanted to just do a brief update. We've had a very successful board retreat. I appreciated all of your attention. I know it was a lot of information in one day. Um, one of the things that I feel like we were able to accomplish is just that increased level of transparency that I have strived for, for the last year and a half to make sure we're all on the same page, working towards the same goal. And that's always students as a priority. Um, so through that, um, just as a summary, um, the competitive grants that we have received so far in the last year and a half is totaling five point eight million dollars. So, those competitive grants are able to supply us and support the programs and the initiatives that we have going on that we would not be able to fund otherwise. So, we are very appreciative for the board to spend that by our team members to get us to almost that six million dollar mark. Uh, we have been, in just gone overboard when it comes to security updates, but I don't feel like there's ever enough that you can do. Um, the planning and the preparedness that's gone into that has been tremendous. Um, as far as us being able to apply for the Georgia steel with preparedness, um, the intercoms and camera systems that have been installed, what we've done at the Titan Academy, including the regular schools with our camera systems. We have ongoing school by safety assemblies that started in October, but will continue throughout the school year. Um, we'll have another one of our intruder alert drills that we actually started last year where we involve all of our term accounting, actual city police, EMS, EMT. We'll have another one of those scheduled in the next few weeks. And then, of course, we've got our costume lights and fall talks collaboration that we're doing with the city and the county. So, we just appreciate all the work that's gone into all of these efforts being put in place because it is a massive undertaking getting our schools to where they need to be. Um, as far as director reports, um, directors and principals, maybe detailed information about what's going on in their individual departments as well as what's going on in the schools. Uh, we do have some date data games that are significant that we are very proud of from last year to this year. Um, when it comes to the elementary school, uh, one of the things that we're most proud of is that last year when we did the beacon springers at the beginning of the year, we had forty-six percent of our students identified at risk. And we did it again all of this year, we only had thirty percent of our students identified at risk. That's a reduction of sixteen percent, which is significant in one year. For our already mathematics at elementary school, K through third grade, we had an increase in all of our mid and above grade levels standards. For CCRPI, our progress math at elementary school increased by almost seven percent. Um, readiness increased by two percent and all three domains of the readiness section improved from twenty-four to twenty-five. At the middle schools, as far as closing gaps and our flags, we had an increase of almost eight percent. And our TSI focus group, which is our students with disabilities, they are in bringing flags in all of their content areas from going from twenty-four to twenty-five. And that is, that is significant. We also had a beyond the core score, um, for our SWV of seventy-nine point five five. Um, it increased to one hundred in twenty-three, that is a twenty point four five percent increase. Again, significant at the middle school. We appreciate all the work and thank you. At the high school and content mastery, um, it was the highest in the district at forty-four point nine percent. If you look at a three-year plan of content mastery, um, it's increased sixteen percent over the last three years. Um, and if you look at just U S history alone, they've increased twelve percent in the last year and algebra has increased almost eleven percent in the last year. Uh, closing gaps, as far as the flags, we received green flags in algebra and U S history. Uh, we've already talked about graduation rate. Um, it increased and our four-year rate is now ninety-six point eight four. Um, as a reminder, there's only sixty school systems in the whole state of Georgia that have above a ninety-five percent graduation rate. We have one of those sixty out of the four hundred and fifty high schools in Georgia. Uh, readiness also increased three percent and four of the five domains improved from twenty-four to twenty-five. So, as I mentioned at the retreat, we may not be where we want to be as far as achievement, but we are definitely making a lot of collaborations. Um, appreciative of everything that schools and the districts doing to get us there. Um, obviously, I did highlights from the college and career academy, successes that we've had in the first year as a whole and our ongoing strategic plan, facilities plan and cognitive accreditation plans. So, again, I know it was a lot of information and, and, well, members, I just appreciate your attention and our ongoing collaboration to get us where we need to be. And then the other thing I have, unless y'all have questions, is the winter reading program, which is in your packets. We applied for this. Um, it's not really a grant, but it's just a reading program that we're able to get for free at no cost to the system. We have received twenty-five student take-home packs and each one of those packs have ten books in it at no cost to the system, which we're excited about. We're now gonna have a winter break to read upon, which we have never had before. So, every single student will receive at least one, probably two books on December the twelfth that they can take home to keep, um, when they wait for the winter break. So, we're excited about the work that's been done at the elementary school, uh, to make that happen. And unless y'all have questions, that's all I have.
I want to ask, yeah, what's happened with the saws under the shadow curse? Have they been moved? Have they been installed?
Yes, they've moved.
I still say that some of them should have been put in that area.
Well, now, some of them were about, the table saw and bandsaw. Maybe one of them were put in. I, I got with Mr. Rogers and asked what he wanted and those were put in.
I know the standards, I'm gonna go to the kitchen. I, I know there's, we've worked, there's some we've worked in, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I asked him, got him to tell me what he wanted put in there and that's what I put in.
I just think about it and it's just in a way.
No, they're, they're, they're put away.
And that's the meeting.